Good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, November 17th, regular meeting of the Cordera Town Council. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here, thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We have no presentations tonight, so that brings us to our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously. Yes, Rebecca, did I miss something?
Public comment, open time for public comments.
Thank you so much. Open time for public comment is first, this is an opportunity for folks who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda to do so. Anybody who would like to speak, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. We're going to give speakers three minutes per person. We'll now give folks on the line here a minute here to raise their hands if they would like to make public comment on any items that are not on our agenda. Thank you, Rebecca.
We did not receive any emailed public comments either.
Okay, great. And I am not seeing any hands go up here, so we will close. Open time for public comments. Again, no presentations, so that brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. Any member of the public may pull an item from the consent calendar and have it further discussed or give public comments on it. We're going to start with an opportunity for members of the council or staff to pull any items from our consent calendar. Would anyone like to do so? Seeing none, we'll open this up to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from the consent calendar or comment on the consent calendar as a whole, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. We'll give folks a minute here to raise any hands. And I'm not seeing any hands go up, so we will bring it back to the council, close public comment, and bring it back to the council for a motion on the consent calendar. Bob?
Move items four A through four F.
Thank you, David seconds.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you. That concludes the consent calendar and brings us to item five, public hearings. Our first public hearing is consideration and possible introduction of ordinance number 1003, an ordinance of Cordera regarding electronic signatures. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to thank Rebecca Vaughn for drafting the staff report and for the town attorney and her staff for amending and updating our municipal code for this discussion tonight. Over the past several years, the town of Cordera has invested in and continues to improve in townwide business processes. As we move forward with encouraging the use of paperless electronic documents, the next step is to create a policy that allows for digital signatures. The general legal framework for the use of electronic signatures on electronic records has been in use and in place for over the past decade. On page one of your staff report, Rebecca outlines in the bottom two paragraphs, the history of the legalities of allowing us through the Secretary of State, the regulations necessary to move forward. The use of electronic signatures on legally binding documents has become increasingly prevalent in the private sector and is gaining popularity in the public sector. Many of the Marin County managers over the past six months, due to the COVID-19 process specifically, have talked about uniformly going towards electronic signatures and bringing this discussion to each of our councils. This recommendation tonight mirrors our friends in Larkspur, and so you'll see a lot of similarities to what they did recently. So staff is recommending the adoption of this ordinance to accept electronic signatures for all documents. The ordinance would add chapter 2.52 to the town's municipal code. This section would allow the town to use and accept electronic signatures on legally binding documents, and the policy would apply to all signatures used in processing independent contracts and requests for proposals, as well as internal communications, routing slips, external correspondence, and all other official activities. The estimated fiscal impact for this, we plan on using the DocuSign service. This would be valid for up to five users. The cost would be $2,760 on an annual basis, and it's also anticipated that an allowance of five users will be sufficient for our current needs. This is also an expected cost savings in terms of reducing printing, distribution, and storage of paper documents. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions of the council.
Great, thank you, Todd. Are there any questions for staff? And if there are not, we will go ahead and open this item up to public comment. So members of the public, if you would like to make a comment or ask a question about this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Folks will have three minutes apiece to comment. I am not seeing any hands go up. Rebecca, did we receive any emails?
We did not receive any emails or comments.
Great. And we have no hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Bob?
I use DocuSign in my job all the time for real estate, every single day. It's great. It's easy. People can figure it out. We should absolutely do this and do it now, and I'll move that we approve.
I'll second that.
Sir, great. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you. That was our only public hearing, so that brings us to item six, business items. Our first business item is 6A, discussion and possible adoption of resolution 412020, authorizing the issuance of one or more series of pension obligation bonds to refinance the outstanding obligations of the town to Calpers and authorizing a judicial validation action and approving and directing related matters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to share my screen if I may. And I also want to recognize that tonight, we also have our finance advisors from NHA Advisors, Craig Hill and Mike Meyer on the call, as well as our bond counsel, Jones Hall, Chris Lynch is on the call as well, and I'd really like to thank them for how quickly they were able to turn around these documents and really support staff moving forward with the staff report. And so, as we discussed at previous meetings, this conversation really started last year when bond rates really hit some all-time lows, and a discussion was had at the Finance Committee level, which consists of great citizens of our community, as well as staff, and one of our retired council members, Jim Andrews. At the time of the discussion, we still weren't comfortable bringing it to council. But as we continue to evaluate this issue and really educate ourselves with the help of Craig Hill and Mike Meyer over the past six months, we brought this issue back to the Finance Committee and held two workshops. And at the conclusion of that, it was our recommendation unanimously as a Finance Committee to bring this to council, which we did on October 27th, to have the same workshop and education that we all went through over the last six months, and at the end to recommend the validation process. The court, you know, we have to take this because of the cost, the issuance of the bonds. You either do a vote of the population, or you can go through what they call a court validation process. And so, this is what we're recommending. This vote tonight, this approval of this ordinance, or I'm sorry, this resolution does not bind the town in any means. It just positions us as we go through the process. And again, I'll walk you through the schedule because it's not attached to the staff report. It positions us to make a decision as a council in the spring of 2021. And we really want to do that moving into this coming fiscal year. We want to position the council to make this decision one way or the other, and our hope is that the bond rates continue to stay really at their all-time lows. And so, we had that workshop on October 27th. The council agreed with the Finance Committee that we should move this conversation forward. On our November 3rd meeting, we entered contracts with NHA Advisors and Jones Hall to bring this resolution before you today. And so, again, hearing, you've heard this once. I don't want to repeat myself, but if the council has any questions, the team is together to really, to talk to you about that tonight. But I want to make reference to this one page. Can everyone see this chart? Okay. Is it big enough? Here, I'll blow it a little more. Okay. So, just a bigger discussion as we talk about this, because I think it's important. The blue, this light blue color, this is currently the town of Cordera's unfunded liability. It's currently, as of this last June, estimated to be in the $21 million range. As you know, we've had this discussion where this is our, you know, our 25, 30-year mortgage at a 7% interest rate. And when we're talking about considering bonds, what we're talking about is taking that same mortgage and possibly reducing it to 25 years to 20 years to 15 years. There's a lot of different options at potentially a 3%, mid-3%, 3% interest rate, which could potentially have a substantial savings, and I'll show you in a little bit, of anywhere from $500,000 up to $800,000 annually. Now, I say savings, but I call it arbitrage. It's on an annual basis then, by resolution, because we bring a policy to the council, it would be, okay, we have this savings annually. Now, how do we, did Calpers, you know, do we need to move money to Calpers to stay fully funded? If the answers were good, do we want to put it to the pension trust? Do we want to put it to our OPEB trust? Do we need to put it into a reserve account? And so, on an annual basis per policy, it positions us and adds another tool in our toolbox. This limits us in no way of the tools in our toolbox. Currently, we have $3.5 million in our pension trust. And so, we've been able to save that over the last three years, but as you can see, the potential cost moving forward on this chart, and just the light blue for a second, focus on that, where it starts to increase from 2022, you know, to 2032, which you'll probably hear from Mike Meyer of NHA Advisors, is that it's going to spike even further, because as we all know, Calpers, you know, 7% discount rate is too high. It needs to be lowered. And that's why we formed our pension trust, estimating those returns to be in the 5% range. And so, that's why we're building that trust up to pay that difference. This will allow us and position us another level of redundancy. Something else I wanted to point out to you, we had a meeting recently. Currently, the Cordera Fire Authority is fully funded. They don't have an unfunded liability, because Cordera, at the point we consolidated with Larkspur Fire Services, we kept the unfunded liability back with the town and the city. So, in this blue column, that includes our closed safety account and our miscellaneous account for all of our current employers with the town. That number again is about $21 million. If you go up to the darker blue number, that's the Central Marin Police Authority. Central Marin Police Authority has approximately, I want to say about $16 to $18 million in unfunded liability. Our responsibility of that amount is one-third of that cost. It's about $5 million. If you go up to that light green or teal, that's also Central Marin Police Authority, but it's in the name of the town of San Anselmo. And so, Calpers recognizes that account with the town of San Anselmo, but per our joint powers authority agreement, when we consolidated, we agreed to take on that safety account, which is about $8 million. We're responsible again for one-third. So, when you look at the two top, the dark blue and the green or teal parts of this chart, that number is about $8.8 million today's dollars. So, we had the same conversation at a recent Central Marin Police Authority council meeting. The mayor is on that board, as well as Councilmember Avasio, and the board unanimously asked the staff to move forward as well with this process. And so, we'll come back on December 10th for them to begin the validation process too. So, Central Marin Police Authority is going to mirror the town of Cordera if we both agree to move forward with this process. But I wanted to point that out to you as well. And then, I just, again, we've gone over this. But these are the decision points, you know, moving forward and really why we would consider something like this. And so, again, this is the town's complete unfunded liability of Central Marin Police Authority, as well as the town of Cordera. And you can see that orange line, one of the reasons of controlling cost over 20, 25, 30 years, you can see a substantial savings. And so, if you looked at this one as an example, this would be a 25-year borrowing where you could see substantial savings over the course of that 25 years. Between the years 22, 2022 and 2037, it's up to $13 million potentially of savings. As we know, I use savings carefully, because we're going to need that money. It's going to have to go back to other unfunded liabilities and it just provides more opportunities for us. And so, moving forward, again, this is starting the validation process. This takes a few months, especially with COVID. Over the course of time, I'm going to show you the schedule again in a second, but these are the bullet points. We're going to talk about, you know, in the coming months, the maturity length, what are the pros and cons of 15 to 30 years? You know, the size, should we borrow, or should we bond 50%, 75%, or should we do the full 100%? And then, the what-if scenarios, you know, what if, you know, what is our risk in doing this? And so, we're going to run a lot of modeling, and we're going to have a lot of conversations before the council as we move forward. And again, I just want to show, this is from our workshop meeting. This is the schedule. Again, in October, it was the Finance Committee workshop. It was the Town Council workshop. We entered agreements with Bond Counsel. In November, this is what we're looking at tonight. We're asking you to approve the basic legal documents to start the validation proceedings within the Superior Court of the County of Marin. Again, this does not lock us into issuing bonds, even though the title can be a little misleading. It starts the process. Again, in January, March, you can see those, all the things we'll do. We'll go through the credit rating. We'll do the stress testing. Again, the legal documents to position us, they'll be drafted to position us to make a decision, and we'll also engage an underwriter. In April, May is really where we'll have everything. The validation process is complete. We've had these public discussions. We know what the council direction is. If it's in the positive to move forward, you know, we'll lock in everything again in April, May to begin the bonding process. Something else, I just, you know, full disclosure of the cost, it's the fiscal impact. You know, we're spending money doing this validation process. Again, we're not making a decision ultimately tonight, but there is public funds being expended to position us to consider this. And again, that's listed in your staff report under the fiscal impact. Those costs are approximately $20,000 for Bond Counsel to draft those. There's a small cost for our town attorney. We'll have to also, you know, represent us and go to the Superior Court, so there's a cost there. And then, also, per the contract agreements that we recently approved, NHA Advisors will also walk us through this. I'll tell you that the team is talented. They've served this town well. Both Jones Hall and NHA Advisors have been with us for a period of years on some of our big projects. And so, we have a very good relationship with them, and I've just been just seeing other towns and cities go through this process and watching those presentations. I can just say that I feel like we're in good hands with our team, and I've just been really impressed. Again, they're on the call. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them, and with that, I'm happy to turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Todd. Do any of the council members have any questions for Todd or for our various financial advisor folks on the line with us here today? Yeah, Bob?
Just got a quick one. So, I like the comparison to a mortgage, Todd. I thought that was interesting. So, another way to think about this is we're going from a variable rate mortgage to a fixed rate mortgage, where we're taking out all the unknowns over the next however period of years we decide to do this in, and we're locking it down, and we're going to know exactly what we're going to pay. Isn't that another way to think about this?
That's how it's been explained. Yes, that's exactly it. And then, I think the risk for us as we go through it then is, is there any chance that Calpers will underperform from whatever we borrow? So, for instance, if we do a 20-year bond, 21 million, all 21 million at 3.5%. If over the period of time, Calpers underperforms below 3.5% during that entire time period, there could be, that's our risk, right? And so, that's the analysis that we are doing now. But even the most formidable pension folks out there, you know, and you look at the history and how, you know, moving forward, where we think they're going to land, a lot of people, we think it should be 5%. We had Bartown Associates last year do an analysis, and one of the first questions the council asked was, where do you think Calpers is going to land over the next 10 to 15 years? And they gave us the estimate of 6%. And so, there's a lot of analysis and reports out there, and so, that's what we'll do, the good work over the next five months, you know, what we think that risk is. But right now, I'll tell you that staff, we're comfortable recommending this, because of where the interest rates are.
And in the report, it showed that the history of their performance has never been 3.5%. It's always been.
That's correct.
So, it's a fairly low-risk proposition if we can nail that kind of interest rate.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yeah, David?
I'm sorry that this is a very fundamental question, and Todd, you may want to toss this to any one of the consultants. But if someone could please describe at the rate of borrowing, not the interest rate, but the pace of borrowing that is likely to happen. Are we talking about sometime in 2021 borrowing a big slug at a small interest rate? And if so, where does that, and how does it stack up against the amortizing liabilities that we have in pensions?
Hey, Chris, do you want to take that one? I'm sorry, Chris. Mike, you want to take that one?
Sure, and good evening. And if you don't mind, just posing the question one more time, it was a little choppy for me. Apologize.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but what I'm trying to understand is that right now, we have a variable set of obligations annually that appear to be growing, and in the future, should we borrow, what is the pace of borrowing? Are we going to take down small chunks of capital each year, or are we going to be taking down a big slug capital in the first year, paying it off on a flat scale? And if so, where does that slug of money go, and how are the amortizing liabilities being funded?
So, I think there's a few parts to that question, and I'll try my best to address it. But first off, the final structuring, I mean, we haven't determined that yet. So, in terms of how quickly the debt will amortize, whether that's over 15 years, or 30 years, or 25 years, we'll be exploring all of those options. In terms of kind of when you convert the debt with Calpers to a bonded debt, it happens all at once, so it's not happening in different tranches. So, let's just say the town decided to fund all 21 million in the spring. That's the maximum you can fund with Calpers, because that's what Calpers says right now is your debt with them. So, you would send them that money. It extinguishes that debt with Calpers right away, and then you're left with your new $21 million of bond debt. Now, that'll be amortized over a certain period of time that you'll determine to work the best for the town. Obviously, it could be a lower amount as well if the town decides not to fund 100%.
So, in effect, we are trading a funded obligation for the unfunded growing liabilities over time. We're making a swap in effect.
You are swapping out the current unfunded liability, so those liabilities have accrued over the last 20 to 25 years. And you're converting that or refinancing that to lower-cost debt. Now, per the question from the other council member earlier, there will be potentially new UAL added on in the future, and that'll happen with or without a restructuring. And so, really, the goal here is to create a better foundation at a lower level. So, if those future costs get layered on, it's not going to be as impactful to the city. But those UALs will get added on in the future. Any year that Calpers earns under their target, which is 7%, they could lower that target. So, those are all moving targets that are part of the stress testing process, I'd say, because it's very easy to look at projected savings in a hypothetical world. It's also nice to look at what that shape, repayment shape will look like if Pers has some bad years moving forward, and making sure that the town puts in place a structure that provides resiliency to withstand some of those future impacts. So, that's all part of the discussion, I think, that Todd mentioned earlier that we'll be undertaking in the next few months.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, just let me finish. So, would it be fair to say that, should we go through and fulfill this stream of activity, that we would be, at least for a time, eliminating our expensive unfunded liability and replacing it with low-cost level municipal bonds of some type yet to be determined? Is that fair to say? Yes. Great. Okay. Now, I know how to explain it to my neighbor. Thank you.
Todd, did you want to jump in?
And one other thing, Mr. Vice Mayor, you know, again, ultimately, it's a council decision for this, but our staff is also looking at this. Currently, we put on any given year into our OPEB, our retiree health trust, or our pension trust, it varies between 800,000 and 1.2 million. And that's contingent on the money being there on any given year, but that's what we've committed to as a council. What this will allow us to do is actually set that money aside, because that will not be necessary. That money potentially will be able to go back to the general fund for other expenditures. And then, now this arbitrage, let's just say anywhere of a half a million to 800,000 annually, by policy, because we'll pass a policy, right? This isn't going back to the general fund. On any given year, we'll say, how do we owe any money to Calpers now, because we're fully funded with them? But if they underperformed, we may need to use some of that savings to pay that to stay fully funded. And then, by policy, we could put it to the OPEB trust. We could put some to the pension trust. We could do whatever we want, you know, in gaining really nice interest in some of those accounts as well. And now, again, it opens up this revenue stream up to $1 million annually, because we're not putting our general funds into it. We're using this arbitrage of savings, and it's controlled, as you asked and said, Mr. Vice Mayor, it controls those costs over, you know, 20-plus years, which we really need at this point.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, David. Any other questions from the council for staff or consultants? I've got one quick one before we open it up to the public. I was just curious, Todd, in the fiscal impact section, you mentioned there may be additional financial advisory fees incurred prior to beginning the actual bond financing process. I just wondered if you could give us like a ballpark estimate of what those might look like. I don't even know if you're able to right now, but.
Yeah, I think this validation process could be in the 40, $40,000 to $45,000 range. That's what it's going to cost us to get us to the spring.
Okay, so still miniscule relative to the likely savings from going through this whole process. Right. Thank you. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, Todd, does that include attorney's fees? I guess, question is, what would be, again, ballpark, all-in fees?
Yeah, so again, I think the cost are Financial Advisors, Jones Hall, and then as well as the town attorney's office. The town attorney's office, you know, again, Jones Hall is drafting the paperwork, but there'll be time spent on the town attorney. We're estimating $5,000 to $10,000. And again, we're estimating, you know, 35 to 40 for our two consultants. So, again, the range, I think right now, just what I'm looking at is about 45,000. It's approximate, but.
Great, thank you. If there are no other questions from the council, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Any members of the public on the line, if you'd like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we receive any emailed public comments about this item prior to the meeting?
We did not receive any emailed public comments.
Okay, thank you. And I am not seeing any hands go up here from our residents on the line here. So, we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for any discussion and a possible motion. I just want to reiterate before we dive in here that the question before us tonight, again, is pretty narrow, right? It's just, do we continue this exploratory process? It's not actually, you know, do we authorize, do we issue bonds, yes or no? It's not about, you know, locking in the structure of any sort of issuance down the line. So, we're just looking at the narrow question of, should we continue the exploratory process? Yes or no? Would anybody like to make any comments on this? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of it. I think it's a smart move. I think that it helps us control not only cost, but to a certain degree, our own destiny with the unfunded pension liabilities. So, I think it's a smart move. Worst case is, we come into the spring and rates have shot up so far that we decide not to do it. But it's my understanding that even under that situation, we can hold, we can put it, I guess, on the shelf, I want to say. And in five or six months after that, any time period, we can revive it. So, I just think overall, it's a smart move. And I appreciate staff and also the Finance Committee for giving us this option. I think it's great.
Yeah, David?
Actually, let me see if I can get back. Actually, let me see if I can get back to the place where I one second, one second. Oh, there. Okay, you can hear me. I I too agree with Fred and and with Bob, I think, on this is that we're moving in a prudent direction, but I also wanted to point out that the resolution actually does say authorizing the issuance of bonding, and I project that that's a necessary phrasing, even though I'm completely aware that this is not authorizing an actual issuance or an actual borrowing, and we don't have any terms and conditions of actual debt here, but we are taking the first step by by doing this of authorizing the issuance of bonds, because in in way in the future, when somebody looks back at this, they're going to say, well, did the council authorize the issuance of bonds, or didn't they? This is the first step in that process, which we can call off at any time, correct?
Right. It's authorizing something, it's not committing to anything.
Okay.
And I'll just add, I totally agree with with everyone who's spoken. As Todd said, this is this is putting another tool in Corder Madera's toolbox. And I see it as really frankly, a low cost step that opens up doors for us down the road that I think we may well end up being very grateful for. Anybody else want to make any comments? Or if not, we will entertain a motion.
Bob? Yeah, I'll move that we adopt resolution number 412020, authorizing the issuance of one or more series of pension obligation bonds to refinance the outstanding obligations of the town to the California Public Employees Retirement System CalPERS.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Fred. Rebecca, could you vote, please?
Councilmember Cesar.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
And some member of ASIA.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ken Hart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes item 6A. Item 6B is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding preparation of a possible response to the grand jury report titled Climate Change: How Will Marin Adapt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to start off and again, thank the team, Mike, Chris, and Craig. You guys can take the night off. So thanks for your help.
Thanks a lot, Todd. Thank you all.
So I thought it'd be appropriate, even though this is one side of the story, but of climate change and how it impacts our community. And I just, I think it's important. I just wanted to start off with me personally and professionally as a town manager. You know, in my background is the 1982 floods, which devastated our community, and right over my head is is our shopping centers in Tampa Pious, Tampa Vista. You know, our, I think historically, and I think from staff, we may have pushed back in past years of focusing inside out, focusing on the town and working outside of us. But this is a regional, this is a global conversation. I think, you know, just going through the climate adaptation process, I've started to really have an urgency. I've seen the urgency with RJ and Adam and the team, you know, on the climate adaptation plan as well of, you know, we are susceptible in our beautiful community on every known natural disaster known to humankind. And when we talk about the change and in the climate, it's it affects us both ways, both in sea level rise, but also in fires. And so we've we've done an incredible effort with the passage of measure C, excuse me, in our sales tax measure of the hundreds of thousands of dollars we now put annually at prevention, at education, at assistance to our community, at vegetation management, we are all in. And this climate adaptation plan, I mean, process that RJ and his team are going through is really going to give us those tools in our toolbox over the next 20 years plus. But what I'll tell you is, and I've heard it from RJ, you know, when we talk about this grand jury report, we're under a global crisis, but Corder Madera, we're under attack, and so we can't wait 20 years for people to catch up to us. And if we have the opportunity, we are always going to be regional as regional as we possibly can. We want to be part of the conversation, and we're always going to be all in. And so that's number one. And number two, we can't wait, though. And so whatever we do, we want it to be a puzzle piece to that regional plan. We can't wait five years because we need to actually have those, you know, we need to break ground, and we need to start doing things and be and have them in place 10 years out from now. And and I think that's what this council is going to start to hear through that process over the coming months. And so I've really appreciated that our climate, you know, Action Committee and the mayor and vice mayor being part of that. We, your town manager, as well as the mayor and vice mayor meet on Fridays, and we've been talking about some of these issues of programs and things we can think about moving forward. This is the first time we've ever approached the council with a grand jury report in this manner. We've had some great community input from the Marin Climate Action Network. We also have some added information from San Rafael, who approved their grand jury response last night. We have a draft report from Marin County. And so what I would like to do is I have Phil, I have Adam, and I have RJ on the line. RJ is going to start. He's put this in a PowerPoint presentation. So, Mr. Mayor, what I I recommend, but however you want to have this conversation, I want RJ to kind of take a lot of our comments from those those different groups, as well as us from our Friday meetings, and have a discussion, a big picture on all seven responses. And then take it to council for questions, open it to the community for comments, and then bring it back to the council and just quickly, I think, because I think we will be on the same page, work through those seven responses for discussion and feedback, and we'll come back to you at the next meeting to actually approve this. Normally, I've been less than impressed with some of the grand jury reports. I think this is a really important statement and that we make as as a town. And so this is your response. This is not your your town staff's response. And so we're here to support you through that that conversation the best we can. And with it, I'll open it up to RJ.
Great, thank you, Mayor Beckman and council members. I'm going to share a screen here. I have a PowerPoint as Todd mentioned. So I this is in response to the Marin Civil Grand Jury Report dated September 11th, 2020, Climate Change: How Will Marin Adapt? And before I move forward, you'll see two pictures that are both recent, one on Lucky Drive, showing about 18 inches of flooding this last December, and then some king tides over in the Mariner Cove neighborhood, which are, you know, really up on people's doorsteps. So climate changes and sea level rise is already upon us, and it's only going to rise further, and the fires and all the other hazards are only to get more intense. So things that I think most everyone knows, but a picture is, you know, worth a thousand words. So I'm not going to spend too much time going into all the details of the 30-page you know, report by the Marin Civil Grand Jury, but you know, they did, you know, put a strong emphasis emphasis on climate change and really painted a, you know, a real realistic picture that, you know, if we don't do something, there's going to be significant effects to not just our community, but, you know, the region and, you know, globally as well. They simplified climate change relating to two separate issues. One is mitigation, and that's the measures to reduce greenhouse gases that slow climate change and adaptation. And that is the measure such as seawalls that safeguard our communities against consequences of climate change. You know, as Todd mentioned, we've been working on a climate adaptation plan that I've been leading for the town amongst members of the council and the community. And I have also Phil Boyle here from our planning department, who's been working on the climate action plan, which is more focused on the mitigation side of things. So he'll be fielding questions more so related to those issues. So there were seven items at the end of the the report from the Civil Grand Jury, and five of them were findings that Town of Corder Madera is required to respond to, and then another two, which are recommendations. And so a quick summary, their findings were that Marin has been effective in mitigation of reducing greenhouse gas gas emissions. Adaptation planning is essential to protect local public utility transportation infrastructure and private property. The efforts of Baywave and Sea Smart, initial vulnerability assessments complete completed, the county is now possession, well positioned to focus on adaptation planning and policies on sea level rise. The fourth one, existing adaptation efforts across the county pay insufficient attention to other potential effects of climate change, including impacts on public health ecosystems and social equity. The fifth finding, there's insufficient staff and financial resources currently to make an impact on these fronts. And then the two recommendations we're being asked to respond to of is the Board of Supervisors in collaboration with the municipalities should convene a multi-jurisdictional task force, essentially creating a larger group that oversees things, all all things climate adaptation and mitigation. And then the last one is expand upon the scope and efforts by Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, as they've done a very effective job on the mitigation side, and they see that as an opportunity to expand into adaptation. So I want to provide a little context about the work we've done as a town. So in 2018, the town adopted a climate action plan that was prepared mostly in 2016, and that Phil can speak to that, and that really focused on, you know, efforts to reduce greenhouse gases emissions and other things. And then in fall of 2018, we initiated our town climate adaptation plan, and we're in the home stretch here, hoping to complete that document early 2021. And that looks at making our town more resilient to these changes. At the regional and county wide level, there's several efforts that are worth mentioning. There's many others that that aren't listed here, but there are these collaborative, multi-jurisdictional efforts, and the town has been an active participant in, you know, if not all, but most of them. And so these are just some of them, Baywave, Drawdown Marin. There was a Marin County Roll Play Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and then the efforts by Marin Climate Energy and Partnership. So now I was going to spend a little time and discuss what some of the other agencies have either drafted or adopted in relation to these seven criteria. And so I'm using some color coding to try to assist with you know, drawing you to the the different people that we're going to see repetitively through the seven responses here. But this is in regards to the first one that discusses climate change mitigation efforts by Marin have been notably effective. This is the county of Marin response. Some of these can be pretty lengthy. I'm happy to read them or let everyone touch on them themselves. But essentially, there's statistics that show that greenhouse gas emissions have been significantly reduced, and that the county as a whole is ahead of schedule by eight years, which is very impressive. Here is a response from City of Santa Fel. They agree, like does the county, that it has been effective, and they discussed their own areas where they've contributed to that overall countywide success. This is a response from Marin Climate Action Network, MCAN, and this is in a later that was addressed, letter those addressed to council. And it discusses that although the town and the county and other jurisdictions and agencies have set impressive goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, achieving those goals in the timeline necessary is a daunting task that must remain central to climate action countywide. Adaptation efforts must start with mitigation that is effective steps to reduce the causes of impacts triggering adaptive measures. And so we've we've been working on this internally to develop a response. You know, I think on this one, the response could be as simple as agree. But we felt, you know, we ought to show some of the work we've done to date and really speak to it. And so in our response, we speak to, once again, that climate action plan that's been adopted back in 2018 that was initiated in 2016. It talks about the progress we have today on the climate adaptation plan. It talks about some of the sustainable and green investments we made in our, you know, electric vehicles, e-bikes, charging stations, and I'm sure that's just scratching the surface on on the many things we've done. We're considering green building reach codes to also be more sustainable, you know, on the on the development side. And so we've tried to highlight as many of those we can. So that's what you'll see as you read this in detail.
So RJ, do you want to go through all of these and then and then bring it back for discussion after that? As opposed to like stopping on these and and kind of discussing the the drafts here?
Yeah, that was that was the thought is to move forward, and then we can back up the slide and have council speak to each one.
Okay, sounds good.
So moving on to the second criteria, adaptation planning is essential to protect local public utility and transportation infrastructure, as well as private property interests, and to enable Marin citizens to maintain their current standards of living. The simple response from these other agencies was agree. And similarly, at the the staff level, you know, we would agree as well. And again, cite the the efforts that we've done to date and and how we plan to use the the efforts to date to actually implement those measures, in particular on the adaptation side, to address the town's vulnerabilities. So the third one is with Baywave and Sea Smart, initial vulnerability assessments completed. The county is now well positioned to focus on adaptation planning and policies related to sea level rise. And so the county agrees, City of Santa Fel agrees, and MCAN was not required to respond to that one. And so in a nutshell, you know, the the phrasing of the question was, is the county prepared? And so we agree they are based on that effort. And on the flip side, I, you know, in our discussions internally, we also think we're prepared from a town level. And so, you know, the question we'll have, and we'll we'll discuss further is, you know, which, you know, what level of effort from the countywide or the city level gives us the best opportunity to implement the most measures in the most effective way? So the fourth one, the existing adaptation efforts across the county pay insufficient attention to the other potential effects of climate change, including impacts on public health ecosystems and social equity. The county disagreed, and they have a number of efforts they've referenced, Drawdown Marin is a community outreach effort that that really goes into communities and tries to assist those with disadvantages. They've cited numerous projects, you know, environmental restoration type projects that have assisted these ecosystems with you know, sustaining through these sea level rise impacts and others. And then here we have Santa Fel. They've said partially disagree, and I think in their response, they've they've highlighted that in a sense, there could be a little more effort spent on it's the kind of the the social equity component to date. So it doesn't mean that those can't be ramped up and brought you know, to a more equal level, but I think this question is phrased based on on work to date. And so I think we have a kind of a choice here between you know, partially disagree or disagree based on on that work that's done at the countywide level. Certainly, there has been a lot that's been done. It's great that can be spoken to and Drawdown Marin and these other plans. But yeah, you know, should more have been done to date? And that's really a question for the council based on their experience in these in these groups, since many of the members have been the ones representing the town. So the fifth item is there are insufficient staff and financial resources devoted to climate change adaptation efforts across county government, as well as in cities, town, and other agencies, and many of the existing efforts are highly dependent on grant funding. County Marin, City of Santa Fel both agree. And in discussions internally, we would agree to. You know, these are implementing all You know, these are implementing all the things that we think should happen and that need to happen. It's going to be an expensive task and we, you know, we're definitely gonna lean on grant funds and other things as much as possible. And then the other thing to note here is that, you know, each city, each county, each entity has different levels of funding and revenue. And so it's, you know, it's, the same answer doesn't go for every city and agency. But, but still, I think even those that are well-funded and were possibly in that conversation are still going to be reliant on grant funds and will pursue those heavily. So this is the sixth item, and it's calling for a multi-jurisdictional task force. And the county in their response is saying that this has been implemented through Bay Wave, through the local hazard mitigation plan, through a collective of collaborative efforts. So it's not one overarching group that is doing all the work, but really the collective effort of, you know, several of these overarching subsets that are achieving this goal. They speak to Drawdown Marin as well as some other general plans that have contributed to that, that notion. This is the response from MCAN. They are recommending that a climate resilience task force be convened focused on developing a Marin climate resilience plan to address all climate impacts, including flooding, sea level rise, wildfire, heat drought, health, air quality, and additional results of warming conditions. The task force should draw upon the expertise and work of the ongoing work by Bay Wave, C-Smart, the multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan, and the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. I believe they are citing that Marin Clean Energy and Partnership should be one of the leading parts of that task force. Furthermore, they think it's necessary to review the feasibility of flood district, assessing the broadening, the, excuse me, the district's governance to include all jurisdictions and broadening its scope to include sea level rise, ongoing improvement and implementation of the county's climate action plan, coordination information of climate-related programs throughout the county government, including public works, open space, community development, health and human services and others, continued support for core Drawdown Marin capacities, including startup, fundraising, outreach and administrative support. Santa Fel says they've been involved in all those efforts, has already been done around the county with regard to climate change. They are in the vote of it's unclear whether a single comprehensive effort is better than the current subsets of these coordinated efforts. And so they think this requires further analysis. They do think favorably of these coordinated efforts to date. And this is, yeah, part of, part of the discussion is, you know, we're all here trying to figure out what's going to be the most effective moving forward based on what's been done to date. And that's the challenge. We don't have a crystal ball. Obviously, I think we all want to be the most effective. You know, the most efficient and doing what's best for our communities. But, you know, there's, there's a balance between going larger and more countywide and having that regional collaboration and all the, you know, coordination that goes with it versus, you know, attacking things locally, being a little more nimble. So that's, that's part of the discussion we'll have. And as Todd led, you know, even if the regional effort is the direction that we go with recommendation, you know, that's going to take time to get up and running. And so, you know, internally, we think, you know, we don't want to take the foot off the gas pedal and that we should do as much as we can until that effort catches up. And just really, yeah, by waiting five years, you know, that could be significant to many of our people in our community. So lastly, there's a request to whether each member agency of Marin Climate and Energy Partnership should declare its support for broadening the partnership mission, increasing its funding. And so MCAN is very supportive of this. They would like us and the town council to, you know, vocalize that support for that expanded role and additional funding. Santa Fel is saying requires further analysis. You know, they've given a lot of favorable responses to the work done by Marin Clean Energy and Partnership. But do also look at the notion that the effort done on the mitigation side is different than what could be done on adaptation. And they're in some ways involve different types of specialties. So by pooling them all into one group, you're now bringing multiple specialists into that conversation that maybe it's possible you might be more efficient having a specialist who knows mitigation, folks on mitigation, and specialists who knows adaptation, folks on adaptation. So, sorry, and the last one was a request that each city in town, if it does not have a full-time sustainability coordinator, should appoint a committee or commission charged with monitoring and reporting on this climate change mitigation and adaptation efforts. So MCAN is saying, we ask that you consider assigning specific duties to a designated talent sustainability coordinator and adjust its climate change action plan goals. City of Santa Fel, they already have a sustainability program manager, a full-time person. So they actually have implemented it and they were not asked to respond, but they chose to. I think internally, we've been discussing that we agree that one of the two should be done. And I think there's a question of whether it be a committee and defer a full-time staff or whether it be pushed forward and further analysis on the full-time staff member. So that's the, the quick Cliff Notes version of the presentation, and I'll send it back to council for any questions.
Great. Thank you, RJ. That was a really great presentation. So let's start with just strictly questions for staff on what we just saw. And then we'll turn it over to public comment, then we'll bring it back to the council for a discussion. And then I think would be a good time to go, like RJ said, item through item. Some of them will be brief, I think, quick, and some of them may be a little more meaty. So do we have any questions for staff based on what we just saw? David?
You interpreted my gesture. RJ, excellent, excellent work. And I think very logical and very well thought through. On the very first finding, there were a couple of different takes that essentially said, mitigation, yes, we're making progress, but we're not making enough, or we need to do a whole lot more if we need to, if we are going to meet targets. And the MCAN group and, and other voices are saying, well, we, we shouldn't outright agree with the county that mitigation is fine because there's so much more that needs to be done. And so I'm wondering if we have in our response, do you think that we might have missed that somewhat subtle but important to mention that, yeah, we are taking a lot of actions, but we have so much further to go to bring the total supply of our contribution to greenhouse gases down to where it needs to be.
I'm going to let Phil jump in on that one. I mean, certainly, you know, there's always the opportunity to do more. And we should always shoot for the stars. But Phil, do you want to bring any specifics on that particular item?
Sure, sure. Thank you, RJ. Yes, as you know, David, with our, with our climate action plan, you know, we've got a lot of great ideas, great possibilities and measures that the town can undertake to really reduce our greenhouse gases. You know, we, as a town, have significant reduction, no, by the removal of the wind cup manufacturing facility room brought our greenhouse gas down quite a bit. But there are many other things we can do and no doubt about that. And I think, I think we should, we continue to point that out. And I think the strengthening of the Climate Action Committee and, and the forward progression of the Climate Action Plan and update that we're currently doing will, will give us, give us even closer to reducing our emissions.
And David, that's a very legitimate question, but I think questions like that actually might kind of lead us very well into the discussion that we're going to try and get to after public comment. So maybe we try and save those types of questions and the discussion that they lead to for as soon as we get to public comment. Charles?
Just a quick one on this, RJ. Did you mean purchase an electric bicycle instead of on, just a typo?
Yeah, we purchased one electric bicycle and leased three electric vehicles today.
So there's a missing E.
No, and purchased an electric bicycle, not on.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on kind of strictly just sort of the presentation? And, and, you know, maybe avoiding questions that are going to lead us into discussion, which we will get to as soon as we go to public comment. And if not, I'll go ahead and open this up to public comment right now. And then we will bring it back to the council after for, for the rest of our kind of questions and discussion on the actual meat of the responses. If you would like to publicly comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org. We're going to give speakers three minutes apiece. And then we're going to come back to the council for discussion. So we will start with Leslie and then we'll go to James.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, council and staff. I am so proud of this conversation and all of you. And thank you for this opportunity to comment. My name is Leslie Alden, and I've lived in Chapman Park since 1982. So I appreciate Mr. Cusamano's mentioning of what happened in 1982. I met my neighbor's sandbagging. I'm just impressed by this presentation tonight, and I'm really gratified to see the direction that this is, this is taking. And I'm very proud that you're considering R1, R4 and R6 in a positive light. I'm currently a member of the Corredamadera Climate Advisory Committee, and I'm also a founding member of the Marin Climate Action Network. And thank you for referring to our letter so many times. There's certainly no disagreement about the need to prepare for climate change by implementing adaptation strategies. And Corredamadera is certainly in, you know, in jeopardy. But reducing our greenhouse gas emissions is critical to slowing down the worst impacts of climate change. The county's emission reductions that are repeatedly touted and were mentioned again this evening are mostly due to the renewable energy procured by Marin Clean Energy or, and, you know, other things like the, the cup being shut down. But there haven't been very many other broad strategies besides that one initiative. And, you know, certainly in this situation, while the county has to respond to all of the findings and recommendations, Corredamadera doesn't. And I'm really pleased to see that you are considering the others. We do need to do everything in our power to reduce the causes of global warming by dramatically reducing our greenhouse gas emissions using all available methods. And in drafting your response, there's an opportunity to go beyond the grand jury's recommendations and put into place strategies that will really reduce our greenhouse gas emissions at a faster and more significant rate. This is not just about adapting to climate change, but about drawing down our greenhouse gas emissions. Those, you know, the obvious causes of climate change. So it's critical, and again, I'm really pleased to have heard this tonight. It's critical that we see this as a shared responsibility and not limited by our geographic boundaries. Our efforts are going to be so much more efficient if we create a comprehensive countywide framework to reach zero greenhouse gas emissions at speed and scale. We'll be more effective by pooling organizational and fiscal resources. And that obviously would need to be figured out. I think Santa Fel's comments are appropriate. You know, you have to balance between too many cooks in the kitchen, but also bringing the expertise of different experiences and, and disciplines to the table is really an important aspect of, of doing something that is collaborative and comprehensive so that we're not siloed. So I really, you know, I think that Marin Cannon, I certainly as a resident of Corredamadera, really believe that it should be highly coordinated and collaborative via a countywide climate resilience task force. So yes, we can set an example for 15 other jurisdictions, including the other 10 towns.
Very much, Leslie. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Appreciate it. We're going to go next to James.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I sent an email with a text to my comments, but I think somewhere in our response to this document, we should push back to the grand jury and say, regional and state agencies are forcing us to make a decision that will hamper our ability to adapt to future climate change. And the example I gave is the Rena allocation quota. They want to increase the households in Corredamadera by roughly 15%. And in order for us to do that, we're going to have to decide to increase the housing density in either the flood plain and/or in the wildland fire area. And I think we need to make certain that when we're doing our planning, that regional and higher agencies are also sensitive to our needs to adapt to local conditions. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor Bachmann. I just wanted to let the council and the public know that Mr. Andrews emailed comment was linked on the agenda and published with Late Correspondence along with RJ's full presentation in case anyone in the audience or any council members wanted to view the presentation later. It's on archived with the agenda under this item also.
Perfect. Thank you, Rebecca. And I do not see any other hands up right now. Did we get any emailed public comments on this besides from Jim? I know we have the, the letter from Marin Can that is included as part of our, part of our.
No additional emails, public comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council. So RJ, if you'd help us just kind of work, respond to the response here. And I guess I'll just kind of make an introductory couple remarks here and say that, you know, one, I think it's fantastic that the grand jury is turning their attention to this issue. I personally am kind of of the, of the mindset that we should not let, you know, we should not get kind of bogged down in talking about action and let that get in the way of us actually taking action. So that's kind of one thing that I would ask that we kind of keep in mind. And the other thing is, I just want to again, thank Marin Can for the great work that they've done here in this really thorough and thoughtful letter that they sent us. And I think it would be wise of us to kind of leverage the fantastic work that they've done here and incorporate a lot of this into our responses we see fit. I personally think that, you know, I personally tend to agree with, with what they've written here, but I look forward to hearing from everyone else as we go through these. So with that, I guess let's start the discussion on finding one here, which is that climate change mitigation efforts by Marin governments have been notably effective in meeting their goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Anybody want to make any comments on this? David?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I should disclose to anyone who is not sharp-eyed enough to see that I am actually one of the 11 signers of that MCAN letter along with several people from for-profit and not-for-profit sectors, from climate strict, environmental leadership, climate action, in government, out of government. We came together. We came together in actually in 2016 to start the county on a path which ended up creating Drawdown Marin. And so I just wanted to disclose that I have been working on this topic for longer than I've been on our council and that I am a signer and I've talked to town council, SEL, who assures me that there is no conflict of interest because I am advocating for a broad public benefit, not for any personal benefit as I address these things. And I think there are two very fundamental overarching points that MCAN has made in its commentary. One is yeah, we've done a lot in mitigation, but we haven't done enough and we have a lot further to go. So let's not give up on that in favor of the defensive side of adaptation, even though that's a critical function of government. And the second overarching thing is, hey, if we can, if we really step up the working together aspect with other jurisdictions and with the county, maybe we can unlock some additional resources. Maybe we can gain enough additional public attention to bring other foundation business and public contributions of time, effort, and money to this overarching issue. I think we've already seen in the wildfire fighting environment, the creation of a countywide function and funding mechanism that's just been outstanding. And we have, we have Mr. Rivasio as our rep on that a particular joint powers authority. But that's a perfect example of the county coming together and saying, this is really important. That climate consequence doesn't respect borders. Let's create solutions that go beyond all borders. And this says, yeah, let's find specific ways of doing that. I think there are legitimate different ways of doing it. And so far, I really, really like what I see from RJ and team's reaction to this, except in these two points on this is number one, I would say, we should explicitly say, yeah, we've gone a long way, but and here's what we've done, but we still need to go a lot further. Remember when, just before we adopted the Climate Action Plan, Christine O'Rourke presented to us and I asked her, hey, that state goal of greenhouse gas production is way, way below where we are today. Is it going to be easy to get there? Or are we going to have to start making sacrifices? And she said, big sacrifices. What areas? Transportation is probably the biggest. But the point is, got a long ways to go, even if we start really working well. I'll stop there and let's move on.
Great, thank you, David. And I would, the only thing I would add to that is just, I think if we could, like the other jurisdictions, add just some data on our progress to date. And then also, you know, share our goals for the future. Again, illustrating those with numbers, that'd be great. Charles?
So I just, I also agree, you know, a lot of the kind of countywide implementation of this and multi-jurisdictional stuff that I've seen happen since I've been on the councils through my representation on TAM. You know, definitely furthering green and sustainable infrastructure and, you know, their ability to work with the towns for the electric vehicles and electrical bicycles and and funding mechanisms. And then public transportation in general is a really good way to get down to zero. So I just was surprised. I didn't see them mentioned in any of this. I know that they body some of those things, but also I feel like that's a really good resource and methodology that we currently use. And I guess my thing is, is you know, kind of the wording about pushing it forward, like Todd hinted at at the beginning, that we should do this now. Definitely, we have so many great projects that the community could have immediate benefit for, but we delay them because we're waiting to to spend the money down the line, right? And dole it out. And I would like to just, especially in this kind of debt financing time, see us implement them now and enjoy them now and get the economy going again, you know, in a good way for the right reasons. So, you know, just making sure that the overall narrative and wording helps, you know, let people see that and push that forward as a policy. That's what I would like.
Got it. David?
TAM is a participant in the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, I just wanted to point out, which is boosted by the recommendation of the civil grantary and particularly by the recommendation of MCAN.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council on F1? If not, then we can go ahead and move on to F2. All right. So this is adaptation planning is essential to protect local public utility and transportation infrastructure as well as private property interests and to enable Marin citizens to maintain their current standards of living. Do we have any comments in addition to the draft that's on the screen here? Sounds like we're all all on the same page here then. Great. I think we can move on to F3. This is with Baywave and Sea Smart initial vulnerability assessments completed. The county is now well positioned to focus on adaptation planning and policies related to sea level rise. Any comments in addition to the draft that we have here? If not, then we can go ahead and move on to F4. Looks like you guys nailed it with your first draft.
I do have an open ended, almost rhetorical question of how is it that we're going to achieve what we say in the in this answer? Getting better coordination with all neighboring jurisdictions. I mean, we always play nice. RJ has invited Larkspur to each of our climate adaptation meetings and sometimes they come. But are we, how do we actually gain that? Is the open ended question.
Yeah, I personally would think that that's probably best spoken to by their their recommendation about an overarching, you know, county level task force.
So when I was on the planning commission, I was in those early meetings on the adaptation committee. And I felt like when it came to Baywave and Sea Smart, there were critics that were really questioning what the benchmarks were. So to me, what this F3 is saying is that we accept those benchmarks as the the goal in which we as a collective are going to try to mitigate or adapt to moving forward with Sea Rise. And, you know, I just want to caution that there were people in the crowd, both experts and and residents that did question that pretty heavily. It was quite a discussion early on. And so to me, that's what this is getting at is do we as a town institution accept those benchmarks to start adapting to them? So and I felt like it was resolved enough within myself, but I do. I did hear other people that still want to continue to question, which is good because like we have acknowledged in other parts of the discussion today. We don't know how quick or what the effects really will be. You know, we can, we can use our best science and data. But, you know, it needs to be, we need to continue to evaluate it as we move forward. So.
Yeah, and if I can touch on that a little bit. So, and this is kind of getting a little bit away from the question or the finding here, but, you know, asking specifically, you know, how is the town going to achieve that collaboration, that enhanced, you know, regional coordination? And so absolutely, we see that as something that we should do more of and we're in a position to do more of. And it's kind of one of those things where you kind of first have to understand exactly what you think the solution might be. And then you have this, you know, 30% concept, and then you go to those groups, you know, going to those groups at 10% or 20%, you know, may not necessarily be most efficient. So, you know, we know, we've had multiple conversations with Smart, for instance, who has their facility, right? You know, and it's acting as a berm levy currently. And we've had a couple of conversations, but we need to formalize that. But we're still kind of getting to the point where we can formalize it because we want to find out and know what we plan to do to have a more productive conversation. And we plan to do the same thing with Larkspur, with County Marin, with Cow Trans, all the environmental resource agencies that have you know, vested interests in all the surrounding areas for town of Corredamadera.
Good insight, RJ. Thank you. Any other comments on F3 before we move on? All right, let's take a look at F4. All right, this is the existing adaptation efforts across the county pay insufficient attention to the other potential effects of climate change, including impacts on public health ecosystems and social equity. Any questions or comments here? My only kind of thought would just be that I personally, I don't know that I personally disagree with this just because I feel like, you know, you can't really do too much. Like that there is no such thing as as doing enough almost with regards to these things, but that doesn't at all mean that we've done a bad job. So, you know, I'm fine with it the way it is. I just kind of wanted to share that perspective. If there's no other comments, then we can go ahead and move on. All right. Thank you, RJ. F5, there are insufficient staff and financial resources devoted to climate change adaptation efforts across county government as well as in the cities, towns, and other agencies. And many of the existing efforts are highly dependent on grant funding. Any comments on this? Nope, doesn't look like it. All right, we can go ahead and move on. Good draft. R1, the Board of Supervisors in collaboration with the municipalities and other agencies affected by climate change should convene a multi-jurisdictional task force referred to in this report as the Marin Climate Adaptation Task Force, charged with developing a single comprehensive multi-jurisdictional adaptation strategy for all of Marin. I think this kind of gets to David's rhetorical question. So I'll open this one up for discussion. David, did you, I guess David may let his comment stand. Bob?
Just a comment of everything on here in this presentation. This is probably, I think, the most important point. This is a regional problem. It's going to take a regional solution. You know, we're going to have flood issues, but it's going to affect 101, which is Cow Trans. It's going to affect Larkspur. This has got to be addressed on a regional issue. And I think this is a really critical and important answer. Thanks.
Yeah, I 100% agree with you. And I agree strongly with what MCAN wrote in their in their letter to us. I think, you know, from my perspective at least, it feels like they're sort of like an alphabet soup of various, you know, nonprofit and civil society organizations. And, you know, quasi governmental agencies all working at this in Marin County. And I think it would be beneficial to us to have somebody like one overarching body at the county level kind of running the show and pulling the strings to make sure that we don't have, like we were saying, duplication of work or that sort of thing. And I think that may also benefit us in terms of, you know, securing funding for these efforts. David?
And and also that we in bowing to an overarching authority that we don't do what Todd and RJ have referred to as causing them to slow us down.
Right.
And I am so proud of RJ's way of thinking about this of, hey, if we just show enough progress and enough effort. And and it's already happened this summer, witnessed in the Bayway circumstance after he made his presentation on our efforts here. And so I think it's entirely appropriate that we kind of have this little kickback into the shins of the grand jury on as long as we do not get slowed down. It's great.
Completely agree. So, yeah, it sounds like maybe the two tenants of our kind of angle here as a town are that, yes, this absolutely needs to be something that's dealt with at the county level. But, you know, we're not going to wait around for for that to get up and running. Yeah, Fred? Looks like you're muted. Fred, you're muted.
Yeah, I understand. We're going to be going our own thing and marching down our own path. And I also understand the county moves very slow. Do we need to add just additional verbiage saying that there is expectation of urgency with this? I'm just getting that out there because again, I know the county, we could be here five years from now and still be talking about this. And I know it's on a county thing. But again, if we just need to add a little bit more verbiage about sense of urgency.
I'd certainly support that.
I love it.
Great. Any other thoughts on R1? All right, we can move on. All right. R4. Are we doing R4?
So we are not doing R6. Typo in there. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so R4 is each member of the Marin, each member of the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership should declare its support. RJ, did you say we're not doing R4?
We are doing R4. We are not doing R6.
Okay.
Where that response went.
Sure.
I think that's it right there that you're showing right now.
Okay, this is, yeah.
Just a typo at the top.
Okay, all right, then. Let me find the proper prompt.
Here's the proper prompts and then I will go to the next page.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so each member of the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership should declare its support for broadening the partnership's mission and increasing its funding as necessary to enable it to support overall climate change planning efforts, including both mitigation and adaptation in cities, towns, and other member agencies throughout the county. And then we've got our draft response here on the screen. Anybody have any additional comments on this? Yeah, David?
It's it's been my observation and it's and it is indirect and incomplete, no doubt, that you know, MCEP is led by really full time sustainability coordinator from Santa Fall and full time sustainability coordinator from the city of Nevada, who's taking on her second term as head of that MCEP. And there's a great deal of terrific work and that ties in both Marin Clean Energy and MMWD and TAM into it. But I've also, I think I observed that most of the other nine jurisdictions don't have a full time person. We are one that has a member of our planning staff, in this case, Phil, I think, is the one who is essentially assigned to track our adjustments and changes to our own climate action plan and so forth. But it's, this is probably a minority of his job. And I think in other jurisdictions, it falls even lower on the priority level. So, but I would, because I'm not seeing what everybody is working on so hard all the time, I don't have the ability to judge whether really putting more money into MCEP each year or or in fact, just simply saying, Corredamadera, all right, this employee is going to be our climate czar and check with that person over anything that comes down in DPW or or flood control or hillside management or anything. I really am not, I don't have the answers here. I do have the feeling and the sense and others in MCAN have the impression that we would all benefit if every jurisdiction had a sustainability manager or somebody who is really assigned and tasked with following through on all aspects of this. But I'd love to hear what others have to say.
Sure, Fred?
Yeah, I have a question with RJ. Is there a timeline for this analysis that we mentioned in the last statement? That's part one. And then part two, is there been any consideration for going through the interim process?
So regarding the the second part, whether to analyze a staff member, that would be based on direction from council. Because I think we can comply with the recommendation by having the committee. But if we wanted to further analyze it, we could. Just hearing the dialogue thus far and some of the questions that go through my head are, you know, what is the type of person? You know, what skills and experiences that person have? You know, is it more of a planner? In which case, perhaps they're, you know, very well equipped for mitigation. And then the other question is, you know, how is their ability to deal with the adaptation side? Or is it the flip and someone who's got the adaptation, but maybe less strength on the mitigation? And or, you know, is there that unicorn out there that can do both and do it at a very high level? So, you know, what does one person look like that that does that role?
Let me rephrase the question because again, our response says further analysis is needed to determine whether full time, et cetera, et cetera. Does that mean that staff's going to come back to council, council with that analysis?
And it looks like Todd may want to jump in here.
Okay.
So we're talking about adding personnel. I think, you know, this was a recommendation that came up. And so we wanted to start some language, but just hearing this conversation, we may want to, if you allow staff again, to work with the mayor, vice mayor, as we meet on Fridays, and we've been talking about this, to maybe fine tune this a little bit. But I think, you know, whatever we put in here, to your point, council member Kasey said, the grand jury is going to expect But I think, you know, whatever we put in here, to your point, council member Kaseya, the grand jury is going to expect us to report out on it. And so I would see this as the end of the fiscal year from this fiscal year into next. So as we get to the spring and we start talking about the budget for next fiscal year, I think we could do some analysis and what, what I think we're going to find on our, on our options. You know, some of the, the, the agencies that the vice mayor mentioned, you know, they're five times the size of our town in stopping plus. And so this is like the human resources director. This is like, you know, some of those types of positions that we all need, but we don't have the capability to fund them, you know, individually, the smaller agencies. And so there might be shared services opportunities with some of the larger agencies to help the smaller. Or as Councilmember Kaseya said, possibly just a specific, you know, part-time position, maybe an intern, you know, and we can do that analysis like RJ said, should it be more of a planner? Should it be more on the public work side? I'm an engineer, and so we can, we can do some analysis, but I, it would take us until the end of the fiscal year to come to the council with that kind of conversation like we have with some of our other positions. But we may be able to say that in two sentences or less succinctly, and then, you know, say, we should have that analysis by the end of the fiscal year. So there's a date.
Thanks. I just want to make sure that, again, what we're saying corresponds what we're going to do type thing, you know what I mean? So I think you're right. If you just tweak the verbiage a little.
Yeah, David?
In the interim, are we willing to say that the, the new in 2020 Town Climate Action Committee will need to step up and, and take even more responsibility for tracking our efforts and our progress? I, I think that's a perfectly valid way to go, and that is one of the suggestions made by the, the Civil Grand Jury.
Charles?
Yeah, so I'm glad Todd spoke up. I mean, ultimately, we're in, but we're being very cautious with our budget right now. So adding a position when it's not even clearly defined how much the town would benefit from requires a lot more research. But we are sending this letter in, and so it doesn't say you have to have a full-time person. It says a committee or commission, which we've already established. And so in some ways we can respond like, hey, we, we're already in front of this, right? And it, it had huge support, right? How many members did you have? Eli and David, 14 or something? Yeah, like a lot. So I feel like those people are eager to prove that out and show the hard work that they've been doing, and they should be given that opportunity. And I like it as a committee too, because people can move in and out and get the experience and the, 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 the relations and everything out of it. And I think that's more appropriate for a smaller town of 10,000 for that type of kind of self-mobilization instead of using tax dollars to fund a full position like Santa Fe might be able to, or Nevada, or one of the larger institutions. So I definitely am on board with that.
Yeah, I'll tell you that my, my, my perspective personally is that Cordera is a small town. So whenever we're talking about adding a new position, even if it's part-time, it's a big, it's a big deal. It's a big discussion. But I also feel like climate change is by far and away the largest issue facing our community. So I think, you know, just, just as a matter of principle, it certainly could make sense. Like you said, Charles, I think a lot of analysis necessary, a lot of rigorous analysis that I know Todd and his staff are more than capable of to determine whether that might be the right path forward. And if it is, I totally agree with what Fred and Todd were talking about, where maybe it's a position that we say share with Larkspur or, you know, some other such type arrangement. I think, you know, we, we've got a really good model already for, for shared services with Larkspur, so I think that may be something to explore there. But I do think that this may be a really valuable thing for us to explore down the road. Did you want to add something else, Charles?
Yeah, the, the other thing is, is, you know, we just authorized a large fee for consultants, right? And ultimately, when I've worked at other large institutions, the airport, for example, you know, they hire a lot of consultants so that you don't have to have someone on, on time all the time, right? Even if it's part-time, that it's continuous. Because, you know, with these kind of big analysis of like Sequo and stuff that would take to do this, you want them on and off again when the work is there, right? And so that's the other thing is ultimately, instead of an individual, it's more like a contract with, with a group, which we've also initiated, right? In anticipation of this. And so maybe that's the feedback you could give the grand jury is that, you know, instead of just dedicating all these people that ultimately their rules aren't, you'd have to start sharing them or something like that, that you have the experts at these firms that can provide it across a much larger swath of and keep busy through all of them in the aggregate without a full commitment. You can pull out if you needed to from, from, from funding it, right?
Yeah, I hear you, Charles. And I do agree that, that, you know, part of our analysis should be, does it make sense to hire somebody, even if it's part-time? Or even if it's a shared position versus just going the consultant route, you know, when we need it? I certainly trust the staff to, to, you know, perform that analysis and figure out what makes the most sense. And I think maybe it would make sense for us to include in our, in our response to our six that we, we do plan on carrying out that analysis and figure, you know, maybe the analysis comes back. Hey, we think our, our climate action committee is, is, you know, all we need to move forward on this. That's fine. But I think, you know, just doing the, doing the analysis in good faith and letting the grand jury know that that's our plan might be a good path forward for us.
Yeah, just go on. Yeah, just trying to make sure we fully understand. Yeah, we, we could just say agree if we want to keep it simple. And then obviously, anything we say beyond that, we can commit to if we're comfortable. Sounds like everyone understands that, but just wanted to say that for the community.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Cool. All right. I think we're all set, and that's the last one, right, RJ? Great. Would you guys like any other direction from us on this item, or do you feel like we're all set?
I think we're set. Thank you for the feedback. We'll, we'll bring this back to you at the next meeting, and thanks RJ and Phil and the team for all your work. Great job.
Very impressive.
Awesome. Thank you all, and thanks again to Marin Can for sending us the, the thought letter that they did. That wraps up item six B and brings us to item seven, which is Town Manager and Council Reports. We will start with Todd.
I'm going to start with the Cordera Sunset recently in the background. Got to love technology. Just a couple of quick updates. I think it's the, our third climate adaptation workshop that RJ mentioned earlier. That's this Thursday, November 19th, six to eight. And then the, what RJ and his team are planning from the feedback of the three workshops, we will come back to the council in the coming, the next couple of months and really start discussing that and building our plan moving forward with the community. And so I'm looking forward to that discussion. With the help of the mayor supervisor Adoni is going to hold office hours this Saturday, November 21st from three to five to discuss and answer any questions with the Home Key Project on Casa Buena. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing that. And they also are asking to really help with the Q and A process if members of our community can send their questions to the county in advance by Wednesday. And that information is on the, the main homepage of our website, and we're also sending out that information to the community. Councilmember Kaseya and staff are holding interviews. We received 18 applications for Home Key for our advisory task force group. And so we're going to do those interviews tomorrow from nine to 12 via Zoom. And so we hope to select our, our new task force and have them up and running and hopefully have our first meeting before the Thanksgiving break where we can give us some assignments, so we don't lose any ground during the Thanksgiving vacation. And I just want to thank, you know, Adam, really specifically and the mayor. But Adam, you know, I think we've lost our planning director, you know, for the last six weeks on this project. And he's really, you know, done all he can, even on the weekends, late at night, to make sure the county understands how important this project is. And I really appreciate, you know, all his work as well as the mayor. So thank you for that. As you know, COVID-19, the numbers across the nation have really increased in every state. And it's also impacted California, all of our counties. Most of the counties around us have gone from orange or red to purple. Sonoma County stays purple. They've never gotten out of the, the tier, the top tier one, most restrictive category. Marin, as you know, we, we moved from purple tier one to tier two, and then all the way to tier three, the orange category. We're moving back effective Tuesday to the more restrictive red category, which is tier two. And what that means for us, it means a few things. So normally in the red, the tier two category, you know, it reduces indoor dining by 20 to 25%. The state actually did increase that restriction, and they are no longer allowing indoor dining. When you look up and down the state and really some of the national numbers, a lot of the transmissions are happening indoor and, and the indoor dining restaurant situation. And so they're going to attack that and really try to curb this and control it over the next three weeks. So we're going to stay in this more restrictive category for three weeks. It's on our website of what that means for us. You know, we anticipated this, you know, this is a safety, first on the safety side. Mike and his team on the communication side, this isn't a time to relax, and we're really trying to get out there and educate people. The state also came down, you know, they call it the mandatory, you know, mask restrictions. But if you read it, it's more of a recommendation in some cases, you know, you, you can, you don't have to wear a mask if you're six feet apart from someone. But now you have to actually carry the mask. So, you know, again, it's not a mandatory across the board when you go outside, but they, they are requesting that you do that. And when you leave your house or your car that you wear a mask. So we're going to continue to educate, will enforce when appropriate. You know, we're supporting, you know, the Patty Stolier concept of, you know, the, the mask tree. Central Marin Police Authority has masks as well as the fire department. So we're, we're trying to get that message out there, but also support, you know, our community with that. So we're going to be in this category for three weeks. On the, on the financial side, Daria anticipated something like this. And so we, we still are seeing, you know, our financial estimates. I'm still comfortable at this point. We're going to have a mid-year review probably in December 15th, so we can see how we're trending. But we did anticipate something like this, but I'm really concerned of the second round for our restaurants. And so I know we can't get into the discussion. This is just an update, but something I'm going to bring back to council quickly is, you know, is actually our town attorney had the idea in our staff meeting the other day, but it's how do we promote, you know, our businesses again? And so we've done a great job with Julie in the chamber and our communications team, you know, Rebecca, Lorena and Mike. But one of our thoughts maybe to come back to you is how do we support the residents, maybe with funding and gift cards that go directly to our businesses and restaurants? And so we're thinking about some concepts. And I, I know the council has a lot of good ideas too, and I know Charles is spinning right now, and so I'll be calling you tomorrow on that. But to come back to you and just ask for a little bit of funding, I think we have it in our emergency fund to really get out there and promote and help our businesses get through the next three weeks. Our transmissions were specific. It was actually a really large wedding. That's illegal, the way they've held it. And actually a really large funeral that had a really large amount of, it, it impacted our numbers significantly over this one week period. It really doubled our numbers. So the way it's trendy now, and I know the county wouldn't say it, but when I look at these numbers, it'll be interesting to see how the next couple of weeks go. As long as we do our part, I think we might be able to stabilize where we go and stay out of the purple, the most restrictive category. So anyway, we're having those daily meetings. The county health official has been really great. I sent you all, and I'll put it on our website. He did a really good PowerPoint to the Board of Supervisors about this, and so we'll make sure we get that out to our community. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Todd. Thanks for the great update. Great work there. Thank you, Amy, for, for helping push the, the local businesses there. Looking forward to see what you guys come up with, with Charles. And Todd, thanks for letting us know about the COVID situation. I think that's a great illustration of how it only takes, you know, one or two people, you know, irresponsibly, kind of selfishly, holding a large gathering to screw it up for the entire county, you know, these two big events. And now we're all back in the red tier for, you know, how many weeks? So I think, you know, that's a, that's a powerful example there. We'll go to council reports next. We will start with Fred.
Yeah, last Friday I attended the MCC MC Economic Recovery Committee. Just a couple of things on that or a few things. John, by the name of Max Coden was there representing Marin County. In addition, the Director of the Parks for Marin County, he's also one of the acting coordinators for Marin Recovery. Couple of things he mentioned, which I thought was kind of interesting with the uptick in COVID cases. One he was saying is that it's widespread. It's not limited to one geographic area. There's still analyzing data. And the other thing that was interesting, he had a chart on this, is I guess Marin County also tracks cases by race and ethnicity. The number of white cases with respect to white race category has gone up. Just one week, it was like 46%. It jumped to 63%. So I just wanted to point those two things out. On a general level, on the committee, a couple of other things that came out. One is along the things that Todd kind of mentioned, they're trying to look at getting people to shop locally within your respective communities because they figured that will assist businesses. And then the other thing they really emphasized is trying to curtail gatherings during Thanksgiving. They're really trying to, to get that hammered home to people. Kate, who is, she's just got elected mirror in Surrattville. She mentioned she has three sisters. Her mother's like 87 and they're not getting together. So I think that's another messaging we can get out in our communications. I know it's hard to do for people. And the other thing I did also along with Mira Beckman is we tend to grant open East Calamity Park last week. Kudos to Park and Rec for putting that event on. Everybody was socially distanced, wearing masks. I think it went really, really well. And kudos to Parker, to Public Works because that park looks really fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to go by there, go by there. And the neighbors just really appreciated the work the town did in there. It was nothing but outstanding kudos all the way around. So.
Kudos to you, Fred, for, for your great work on that project as chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission and to the rest of the commission as well.
And that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Charles?
Yeah, so I attended the TAM meeting last month. And they, based on the, the feedback from the governor and the, and the state about electrification, they had a great presentation about funding mechanisms to electrify fleet vehicles and some of the bigger push and problems in, in electrification. And we, we approved some pretty substantial charging infrastructure in other parts of the county. But based on the great presentation that was given, I actually reached out to some local jurisdictions that could take advantage of that. One being the Cordera School District. So I talked to Brett, which he got very encouraged and got him in contact. Another one that they, they struggle with this is the large, large fleet vehicles, so not trucks, vans, stuff like that, but like heavy equipment. Because there isn't really manufacturers of that. And so, you know, but they want to basically do some innovation funding to try to figure that out for, say, fire, you know? And, and so maybe I'll have a conversation with Bob about, you know, how that could impact. And we can electrify those larger pieces of equipment or facilities. But yeah, you know, in general, like I said, I, I think that they're really going towards everything that we just talked about earlier tonight in a really good way and trying to have it take a foothold. So. Yeah.
Good stuff, Charles. Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, a couple of meetings. Eli attended the Police Council Meeting, and as Todd mentioned, the big thing was we hired a firm to issue pension obligation bonds. We're going to be exploring that to refinance our pension liability for the Central Marin Police. And in the Fire Council Meeting, we had an amazing presentation from Todd Lando about everything that's being done to prevent fires for Central Marin Fire, and it's incredible. Todd's actually trying to get a copy of the presentation. Hopefully we can share it with everybody. It's got great visuals, great photographs. It's just amazing the work that's being done. We also approved purchasing a new fire engine, and we announced and kind of celebrated Ruben Martin as our new fire chief, which we are all really thrilled to see. And that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Bob. David?
Thank you. Three quick things. The first one is very much in parallel with what we're advancing on MCE Clean Energy because of their continued strength of operations and deep reserves that they are gathering has gone up one more tick in their ratings. And as a result of their having investment-grade ratings from two rating agencies, they're starting the process of hiring bond counsel to be able to take advantage of the very low municipal borrowing rate so that they cannot just sign power purchase agreements and be on the hook to paying others for clean energy, but actually buy or build and own clean energy facilities of different kinds at a very low cost and cost. MCE is still growing. In Solano County, the city of Fairfield wants to get in as a, as a member. And so, and MCE is collaborating with almost all of the other CCAs, Community Choice Aggregation entities in California to sponsor and solicit offers for long-duration storage that might help with PSPS BS events. Second night last Thursday, I went to the Priority Setting Committee. This is representing Cordera for the county-level group. This is representing Corder Madera for the county level group that determines priorities for where CDBG Community Development Block Grant and Home Money might go if it's coming from HUD. There's a new allocation as a result of COVID 19 and the allocations that Congress has made this year. It's over a million dollars coming to Marin County as a whole. I have to say that for a variety of of reasons, the analysis by staff was pointing to where is COVID hitting the hardest and where are the other intersecting needs the greatest? And the answer is Santa Fel and Novato. But there are some additional funds, and I hope Julie Krisberger has her ears wide open. There's about $90,000 of funding for businesses that will be available. Almost first come, first served, but people will have to qualify likely to be late December or early in the year. And this would be not in Santa Fel or in Novato, but other county businesses who are in need of support as a result of COVID impacts. Finally, I, the Climate Action Committee of the MCC MC is going to get together and this coming Monday evening to talk about responses to the civil grand jury report. So I'm really glad to have gone through the conversation we've had tonight. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, David. Most of the stuff that I did has already been reported on. I just wanted to reiterate that Supervisor Adoni is doing an office hour specifically for Corder Madera residents to to ask their questions about Home Key this weekend. Supervisor Connolly will be there as well as will Ashley Hart McIntyre, who is the county's, I think, homeless policy analyst. So that'll be a really good question for for residents who who want to learn more about Home Key and have questions or concerns to take their questions directly to the people running the project and the people who can give them the most detailed and precise information there. That that event was originally going to be in person. We it got moved to Zoom after we went back to the red tier, so I'm I'm bummed about that. But Matt Willis just, you know, Dr. Willis would not allow that event to take place in person. So that's unfortunate. With the League of Cities, we're moving forward, setting priorities for this coming year. So I hope to report out to you on on some meetings going forward. Then the last thing is I attended a board meeting of CMSA. Kind of no news is good news there. One thing that did stand out is that they did an assessment of most of their piping infrastructure, and it looks much better than they were expecting. And that is all I've got to report. Do we have any comments on the draft agenda for our December 1st meeting? Fred?
Yeah, maybe not December 1st, but a future meeting. If we can get the the director of Park and Rec to come to one of our meetings and give us a presentation on, one, what's been going on with Park and Rec? Because I know they went from in person to virtual. They've been doing a lot of good work. And the second part, they can give us what initiatives they have for coming up for 2021.
Sure. Thank you, Fred. Any other comments? And if not, we can go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
Sanitary District.
Meeting. Who did we lose? All right, we'll give them a call. Yeah.
Thank you for noticing my.
No worries. For some reason, I saw a notice of cancellation, but that was a previous week, wasn't it? Let's see, are you guys on a calling Bob and David?
I'll I'll grab Bob. Can you call David Rebecca? I'll call both.
Charles isn't on either, is he?
Oh, shoot. Did he go to? Oh, man.
Hey RJ, are you on?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Yeah, again, just great job with Skunk Hollow.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
Well receptive. Everybody loved it.
No, and and we got, you know, great feedback from the commission early on. And, you know, Ashley brought some good insights when she joined and all around, I thought it was a good effort. You know, everyone really chipped in and it was great.
Yeah. And the path on Redwood Highway is looking really good also, except for some of the leaning trees. But I figured that that's because of the wind. One quick question while they're calling. Are we going to be putting any signage, I was thinking about this because we walk over there all the time, on that path anywhere like, and I'll make this up, you know, like Redwood High, Corder Madera, Redwood Highway Bike Path, just so it gets our town name out there. Do you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah, we certainly can. I I don't know if we have that. I don't I don't know if that was preexisting.
It may not be just, again, we walk all the time and I was out there thinking, I go. Not that we, it's almost like, should we get credit credit to a certain degree? But also it's publicizing, it's it's the communication part.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can. I can look into that.
I even like the the crushed granite.
Yeah, that's, and actually, the walkers in particular really like that. It's just softer on your, all your, you know, achy bones and all those things. So.
Yeah. And even the the borders they put so it doesn't go into the creek. I just thought the whole thing is really well done.
Todd, were you able to reach the other two?
I'm here.
Left a message.
Sorry about that.
Bob's on. And I'm just, let me try David one time.
My bad for not reminding everyone. I totally forgot. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, for.
Sorry about that.
For a minute, I thought there's going to be, there was a separate link.
We should say something at the beginning of the meeting and remind everybody Zoom is.
I I totally forgot, honestly. That's on me.
Obviously, I did too.
Should be a quick one.
Great.
Hey RJ, one more quick question for the trees on the path. Do those turn color, like fall foliage colors?
I can't recall. I think there's some crepe burdles and you know, I, there is a discussion at council on the landscaping. I just don't recall.
Your wife likes fall foliage.
I'm sure it's on the webpage, so I can send you the link.
You're talking about the bike, the new bike path?
Yeah.
I'm getting great feedback on that. People just love it. Great job. Thank you.
His team's been busy. You should see him like Friday afternoon. He's done.
Just today.
David's calling in right now, so we should, we should be good.
Great. All right, there he is. And we are still recording, so we can go ahead and get rolling. Sorry, everybody, about that. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, November 17th meeting of Sanitary District Two Board of Directors. I should have reminded everybody about this meeting at the beginning of our council meeting, but I forgot as well. So with that, Rebecca, can we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Cassisa? Board Member Lee?
Here.
Board Member Avasio?
Here.
Board Vice President Kunhardt?
Here.
Board President Beckman?
Here, thank you. We're going to wave the salute to the flag as we just did that for our council meeting. Open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for folks on the line to comment on any item that's not on our agenda. If you'd like to comment on any item not on the agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed comments for SD2 open time?
We did not receive any email comments.
Great, thank you. And we have no hands up, so we will close the open time. There are no presentations, which brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. Any member of the public may pull an item from the consent calendar or comment on the consent calendar as a whole. We'll start by asking if any board members would like to pull any items from our consent calendar or staff. Seeing none, we'll go to the public. If any members of the public would like to comment on the consent calendar or pull an item for further discussion, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom. And seeing none, we will bring it back to the board for a motion on the consent calendar. Bob?
Move to approve items four A and four B.
Thank you. Is there a second? David, thank you.
Board Member Cassisa?
Yes.
Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kunhardt?
Yes.
Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you. There are no public hearings, which brings us to our only business item, six A. Consideration and possible approval of notice of completion for the Trinidad two pump station modifications project.
Thank you, Board President Beckman and members of the board. So this is a project that upgraded and and replaced our oldest pump station in the sanitary district. Made significant improvements, in particular, also on the safety side of things. And over the course of the work, there were some challenging conditions where there was a stretch of trenching in 12 foot deep bay mud adjacent to the the tides and with the potential for other water in the area. The contractor worked diligently through those conditions, but we were still experiencing some some unforeseen water that that just didn't add up to kind of the the tide and and other potential for groundwater. So they continued on and it led to kind of a deeper analysis from our construction management team and also coordinating with the Water District, which they later came in and did a repair nearby on one of their facilities. So after analysis by by all agencies, which took some time and hence why we're here, you know, you know, about a year or so after the project was completed. But we went back and forth and were able to come to a resolution where the Water District shipped in to to reduce the the comp cost impacts of the project. And so we're hoping you'll consider and approve a notice of completion, but also an additional request of funds for the sanitary district budget of $17,550. And that'll be out of the capital fund. And without, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the specifics.
Perfect. Thank you, RJ. Any questions for staff about this item? If not, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. If any members of the, oh, David, do you have a question?
RJ, what's the percent change represented by the 17,000?
So the, the original contract was for just over a million. And so 17,000 of that is looks like.
1.7%?
No. 1.6, yeah. Right. You're real close.
Any other questions? And if not, then we'll go ahead and open it up to public to comment on this. If you'd like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments?
No emails, public comments.
Great. And no hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for consideration and a motion. Fred?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob.
Board Member Cassisa?
Yes.
Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kunhardt?
For the sake of interagency peace, yes.
Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you. District Manager and Board Member Reports. Is there a District Manager Report?
I know report other than we are moving forward with a sanitary district master plan effort. So we'll be putting an RFP out very soon on that. We're finishing a sewer system management plan, which is focused on reducing the potential for spills. And then also, there was a recent coordinated effort with other agencies to contribute about $1,500 toward some commercials that you'll see that kind of talk about best practices to reduce spills in the wet weather season. So you may see some of those as you're sitting around the TV for Thanksgiving and Christmas. So.
Good stuff. Thank you, RJ. Any District Member, Board Member Reports? If not, any comments on the draft agenda for our next meeting? And if not, then we are adjourned for real. Sorry about the the false adjournment, everybody.
There's not another one after this one.